I bet you want my chair, don't you?
No, no.
Are you sure?
You don't think you want your chair?
Oh, no, not at all.
I brought it to you.
There you go.
You're in the middle of self zero. It's not too easy. So what up? And we're going to talk tomorrow.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I know. I know. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. 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 Trying to just get, we have to get chairs.
I'm fearing you're going to be so serious.
I'm doing the same thing.
You gotta do all the reading on your own. I remember several times in sudden or temporary cases, starters or something. It's bad if put in memory. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Um, I actually made a furnace check. She was twenty second about told her the gentleman does it for me.
There's he advanced because he got cold and he got his closet.
Someone came here.
Roger. Oh, Roger. They keep on posting in.
Oh, you're on this?
No, I'm just going to.
They, um, they just work on that. And since I told you this, I mean, there's just that cold last week.
Sorry for that. Hi, Roger.
And I've been waiting for this. He would return receipt from. And so they were supposed to say Friday week. I've got a little. Later this morning, this is how it was. It was finally. Oh, you mean, yes. Well, switching. That's about right. Yeah, sorry. All right. Okay. Yeah, probably do it. He's man, he's still, he's in a show. The noise is pretty gross. I don't think it's to do it. As long as we don't want to do a lighter hold for you or something. Yeah, I'll turn it down. I believe. I started with you guys. I said I was going to see it together. Awesome. Okay. You got it. Okay, you can have my seat because I'm trying to. I've been waiting forever.
Oh, we just come over and do this.
Yeah. Stay here.
Record team.
I will do that. I went over here. That's team right there.
I just want to do these. They want to be, oh my gosh. I'm so sad. I always certain stories. They, I'm certain. I want to be so. And that should be one telling. And tells me, and so. The whole thing is.
I put in. I did. I called away the what? Tomorrow. Tomorrow. Call me. Yeah. She should. Yeah. She's. Um.
Hey. Good afternoon. Work on commission to go hoping regular meeting on January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Commissioner Alvin Shaw, county manager, Derek Whitman, county attorney, county clerk, and court. Christie Archer letters present by zoom. Call this meeting the word bunker. If you haven't done so, please turn off your cell phones. I'm gonna start with the pledge of allegiance, follow by the one beside.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any discos, conclusions?
No, sir.
No. Excuse me. Approval adjustments to the agenda. I entertain a motion. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda presented.
Second.
Motion is second. All is in favor.
Right.
Motion carries. Okay. Excuse me. Time for public comments. Looks like we have a settle here. Comments, we have a preference per person. You will approach the podium, state your name, address, for the record. First up, Wayne Bright.
Good afternoon, Wayne Bright. Two thirty-five Green Heat Court here in Pagosa. Uh, I was snowed in for about ten days during the holidays and then had to dig my way out and go to Tucson. And when I come back, I have this. You guys seen this? What this is?
I did, I have seen.
You seen this? And offering a hundred dollars incentive for kids without parents' permission by San Juan Basin Health District to promote the vaccine and only promote it. If anybody disagreed with it, they were not allowed to be entered into this contest. And then to find out that supposedly the school board or the school superintendent wasn't aware of this, that these people got into our schools and were going around the classrooms talking about this kind of stuff. Are you guys aware that this was happening in our school district? This is terrible. I understand Kim resigned because of this. Is that true? Did she, has she resigned because this happened? And she says she knows nothing about it? This is a crying shame. These are our children and our parents weren't even given a notification that this was going on and then offering incentives of a hundred dollars to our kids to promote a vaccine that hasn't been isolated? Gentlemen, something needs to be done about this. These are our children. We've already had two years of classes being taken away, schools being stopped, the young school being gone. Our kids are not learning anything other than critical race theory and vaccinations, promoting them, but yet not anybody being able to say anything against them and then offering them a hundred dollars. Are we supporting this with our dollars that we're sending to San Juan? This is crazy. This needs to stop, needs to stop right away and we need to stop San Juan. We need to get our own and do whatever we can. If these people are going to come down and lie and sneak into our schools, promote this, that's a crime. That's child endangerment. That's, 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 that's abuse. There's multiple levels of crimes that have occurred here, especially twelve years old. Wow, this is crazy. We need to do something about this and this is serious. These are our children, gentlemen.
Excuse me. Next up, we should. Is there anything direct?
Hello, Commissioner and fellow citizens. It is the belief of many concerned citizens here in this beautiful town, based on our experience of the past two years we've been in this crisis, that the leadership of this town do not have any intention of helping mend the communication barriers rampant in our community. I believe the root of our problems stems from our inability to have civil discourse, public debate, and a free exchange of ideas amongst ourselves. Things have become so politicized and so polarized that we aren't even able to speak to each other. Every single community has been affected, schools, workplaces, families, hobby groups, churches. No community has been spared. We experience how you all, along with the town council and the health department, fail to respond to us. We see how you dodge us, file us away, and pacify us with empty statements and promises. You give us just enough to keep us from becoming enraged, but fail to give us the answers we deserve. It's not too late to shift this, but we're running out of time. To start, we need to create a safe space to come together in person and have important, all-inclusive conversations. We need people of all walks of life to share their perspectives and research and to reexamine the evidence behind everything that's going on regarding the plandemic and inevitably of an economic reset. We will need to acknowledge our mistakes, admit the truth, and accept responsibility for how we will respond. Then we'll need to band together all of our strengths and skill sets, help those in need, and prepare for what's coming. We are far, far better off navigating these uncharted territories together. We need experts in their field to share their knowledge. Let's bring together creative, solution-oriented mindsets to envision the best ways forward, not just from educated people, but from everyday, street-smart people, people who know how to get things done. For this to happen, we have to be able to share without fear of rebuke or intimidation, even if the view goes against the mainstream narrative. If we don't talk this out, if we're not allowed to ask questions, then we cannot analyze the situation properly and we won't be able to arrive at truth, science, or solutions. We cannot afford to allow this dysfunction to continue any longer. Help us relearn how to be civil. What we so desperately need for these divides to be bridged is for you, our elected representatives, we need you to cease and desist complying with the tyranny and uphold your oath. We need you to encourage that we come together as a community. I ask that you please stop dodging us and I think you know the us that I'm referring to. Can you transfer about what's going on when you're making decisions on our behalf, receive our input first? That's what we elected you for. We need you to stop tolerating the exclusion of dissenting views from community discussions surrounding the health of our county. What you resist persists. Shift this by surrendering your ears, opening your heart, and allowing us to be heard. Understand, we do hold you all responsible for every action taken or neglected and for the policies you've enforced. We're very interested in what agreements you've made with the federal government and healthcare agencies and whether you believe we should continue receiving services from San Juan Basin Health Department. We demand answers from them too and we will hold them accountable for everything they participated during this pandemic. Help our voices be heard so that we may represent all of us. Let the truth be known and praise God protect our country.
Should I, can I get your address real quick?
Smart and Third Court.
Thank you. Hold up. Do I, Bill Eener? Bill Eener? Is that correct?
Do I, Bill Power?
Will Howard.
Yes. Out of one seventy, shadow place here in Pagosa Springs. What might you think of these statements about the United States? And these are rhetorical in nature. I'm not really looking for a response from you. Racism is foundational to the United States' distribution of power. In the U.S., institutional racism is what perpetuates inequality. Racial injustice brings the issue of systemic racism to the forefront of America's consciousness. Systemic racism, institutional racism, foundational racism, they express how racism is ingrained into the very fabric and laws and institutions and documents of our constitutional republic. It is permanent. It's systemic and so it cannot be removed, so it can only be replaced with something else. Do you believe that? I don't. But apparently our health department does because these are phrases taken directly out of our health department's online news feed on July seventeen, twenty twenty. You can look it up online. It's right there for everyone to see if they take the time to do it. Fast forward almost two years to last week. Two health department representatives enter our high school campus. Neither parents nor the superintendent are aware of their presence on campus. Nonetheless, they are there seeking out the youth rise club to present a new Junior Heroes Challenge program. Eligible students are offered one hundred dollars incentive to participate. What makes a student eligible? They must promote the health department's position on the vaccine and nothing else. A student asks if participation can present an opposing view if a student doesn't want to receive the vaccine. They answer, you have to follow the contest rules. But since the health department regards any opposing view as misinformation, no matter the research or the science, the answer is no. Only the health department's view promoting the vaccine makes a student eligible. In other words, think like us or you are ineligible to participate in the one hundred dollars will go to someone else. We don't support opposing views because that is misinformation. Those are the terms. So that's our health department in action. From promoting critical race theory and declaring our institutions guilty of systemic racism to engaging in bribery, deceit, closed-mindedness, discrimination, manipulation, and coercion of our youth in our county schools. Why in the world should we desire to remain under the umbrella of a health organization like that? I would far rather be willing to pay more to support our county health department, our own, where constitutional freedoms are respected. While you're in office, establishing our own county health department is the best thing you can do for our county and our community. Thank you. Okay.
Close up the comments at one forty-two. And committee elected board. James, you swear to tell truth.
I swear to tell truth. Hold on one second. So this is a consideration of a special events permit for the skis and saddles Pagosa Country. Um, they want to sell malt, venus, and spirits liquor at the Archelada County Fairgrounds located at three forty-four Highway eighty-four, Pagosa Springs, for the skis and saddles Pagosa Country Ski Door on January twenty-second and twenty-third, which is this weekend. The sheriff has been notified of this event. The proper fees were collected and the purposes was posted through the required ten days prior to today's hearing. Financial impact to the county is the fees paid for the county fee schedule and staff recommends approval of the special events permit.
Pressures have any questions?
No, sir.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve special events permits for the skis and saddles Pagosa County Ski Jory Event, January twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty twenty, as presented.
It's twenty twenty-two.
You have to run. Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, sorry.
Motion is second. All is in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for that.
Committee board, consent agenda. Sorry. I'm sorry. I have consent agenda for the board. I have A, consideration and approval of hotel, restaurant, liquor license renewal for N A S events LLC. This is a renewal of hotel, restaurant, liquor license for N A S events LLC, D B A, Dia Grande Gas Lounge, located at thirteen two eleven West Highway one sixty in Pagosa Springs, Colorado. This renewal includes no changes. The application is complete. All the fees have been paid. Sheriff's Office and County Police Department have completed their inspection and found no issues. The financial impact to the county is fees paid for the county fee schedule and staff recommends approval of this license. We are. I have B, consideration and approval of a hotel, restaurant, liquor license renewal for Boss Hogs in Pagosa Springs LLC. This is a renewal of hotel, restaurant, liquor license for Boss Hogs in Pagosa Springs LLC, D B A, Boss Hogs Restaurant and Salon, located at one five seven Navo Trail Drive in Pagosa Springs, Colorado. This renewal includes no changes. The application is complete. The proper fees have been paid. The sheriff's office, the county police department have completed their inspection and found no issues. The financial impact to the county is fees paid for the county fee schedule and staff recommends approval of this license. We are. I have B, consideration and approval of a hotel, restaurant, liquor license renewal for Boss Hogs in Pagosa Springs LLC. This is a renewal of hotel, restaurant, liquor license for Boss Hogs in Pagosa Springs LLC, D B A, Boss Hogs Restaurant and Salon, located at one five seven Navo Trail Drive in Pagosa Springs, Colorado. This renewal includes no changes. The application is complete. The proper fees have been paid. The sheriff's office, the county police department have completed their inspection and found no issues. The financial impact to the county is fees paid for the county fee schedule and staff recommends approval of this license renewal. Thank you. I entertain a motion. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second. Your motion is second. All is in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That was the liquor board consent agenda.
Yes.
Okay. Because we have the consent agenda coming up next, so.
Okay, we're gonna turn to liquor board. We can be regular meeting at one thirty-six. On the consent agenda. Gentlemen, on the regular consent agenda, I have A, this is the cannibal warrants and purchase cards, January five, twenty twenty-two through January eighteen, twenty twenty-two. I have B is the regular meeting minutes from December twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Regular meeting minutes from January four, twenty twenty-two. I have C, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-two dash six to consolidate two lots into one lot in Lake Forest Estates owned by Robert and Joan Blaze. I have D is consideration of corrected resolution twenty twenty-two dash seven to unconsolidate one lot into two lots in Lake Pagosa Park Block Five owned by Gregory and Joni Landrum. I have E, consideration and approval of certification of Iowa user trust fund eligibility. I have F, resolution twenty, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-two dash eight amending precinct boundaries for Archelada County Elections. I have G, consideration and approval of assignment of Hanger Ground Lease for Hanger Congor Z. And that concludes the consent agenda. I entertain a motion.
One, one point of clarification. I'll make a motion, but I want just a little bit of clarification on the, on the boundaries because we have public here. The reason of the boundaries changing for the precincts is because of the population shift in the boundaries that are existing, so it has to create an equal amount of representation out of each one of those precincts. That was the clarification I wanted to make for the public since we have quite a bit here. Today, other than that, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda presented.
Second. Your motion is second. All is in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. No business. No business. I have A, this is consideration of approval of the Animal Shelter Management Services Agreement with the Humane Society of Pagosa Springs, Colorado. This item was tabled from January fourth meeting, which on December seventh, twenty twenty-one, the V O C C approved the management shelter agreement with the Humane Society of Pagosa Springs, but did not approve the annual fee increase proposed in that agreement. The Humane Society has now provided a revised agreement which increases the annual fee from fifty thousand dollars to fifty seven thousand five hundred dollars in twenty twenty-two and it's compounded by fifteen percent each year through twenty twenty-six. This agenda is for the V O C C to reconsider the original proposed agreement with the annual fee of sixty two thousand five hundred or accept the amended five-year agreement.
So by us doing this, we've already approved the budget, so is this the only other solution for reamending the budget, Tom?
Once the, the budget is adopted, you actually cannot amend it. The two options are you can do a supplemental budget, basically almost like an amendment, they call it supplemental budget, but that's only if there is unpredicted revenue gains that you would like to use, then it can be done, or if there's revenue shortfall, you need to change the budget due to that. What can be done is via resolution, basically transferring money out of contingency to cover any increase over what was the original budget. So it'd have to be, it has to come out of contingency.
Okay. I definitely would only be in favor for this year's sixty-two five. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go the extra additional percentage increase for the next three years.
Four.
Yeah.
Any comments?
I, I don't. I think that, that we, at least in my view, I think we pretty well bet this explained to us last, last week's session and that the five-year agreement would bring us up near a million dollars, or I'm sorry, a hundred thousand dollars, about ninety zeros. Oh, yeah. Is it Friday? So I, I think that is not something that the taxpayer is willing to take on as a burden and I think the sixty-two five hundred is, is not great, but it's certainly more palatable at this point and I think we need to engage in further discussion with Humane Society early this year so we can get all of these facts hammered out before we go through the way of budget presentation again at the end of the year.
I would agree.
Yeah, I have one more question now. The sixty-two five, that's, we're paying half of the normal fees that it would cost when a dog is put into the Humane Society, correct? On top of the sixty-two five?
That's correct.
It is. Okay, so it's a little more than sixty-two five that we're actually ended up paying at the end of the day.
Right. We already proved that portion of it.
Yeah, but I just wanted to be able to know.
Okay. Well, I'd have to agree. I think that the sixty-two five is the more valuable and we do need to enter in discussions with Humane Society a little earlier this year, but we don't want this problem in the future. But that's a, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Animal Shelter Management and Service Agreement, which includes an annual fee increase to sixty two thousand five hundred dollars as presented.
Second.
Your motion is second. All is in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. I have B. I have B, consideration and award of the low voltage wiring and associated services for the new D H S building. This was tabled from the January fourth meeting and our P was for the low voltage wiring and other services for the new D H S building. This advertised in newspaper and on county website. One bid was received and staff recommends the awarding this contract to access audio for the cost not to exceed sixty-six thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. And again, just to refresh your mind, this is for all the network cabling, the fire alarm system, the camera security system, alarm system for the newly constructed D H S building. Questions, any comments?
No, sir.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to award the low voltage associated services contract to access audio for the new D H S building as presented.
Sorry. Your motion is second. All is in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. I have C.
Before this afternoon, commissioners, it's a resolution that's been requested by a title company, so that's why it's for you. This is for the closing on the Hughes Pavilion Arena and so basically it says we're specifically saying or clear to close based on compliance with the purchase sale agreement, a first amendment to it, and also authorizes the chair to sign necessary documents for closing, which is scheduled for February the second. So that's what the department said, resolutions. It's, it's working on the whole.
This is, you know, that is accurate. It's correct. Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Yeah, we beat this up pretty good in some of the work sessions that we've had already. I'm ready to move on.
I'm just glad to see this coming before us from the vote.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two zero nine, approve the purchase for the unis presented.
Second.
Your motion is second. All is in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. No, the new business.
So, yes, again, before this afternoon, commissioners, this is a joint resolution with the Western County Event Center along with the Hardy Hot Fund Advisor Committee. It is a kind of a joint use of the agreement for the fairgrounds, the road grounds. It's basically what it does is create a management committee for that entire area made up of five members, two reappointed by the Board of County Commissioners, two by the Western County Event Center, and one from the Hot Fund. It also creates a ground fund whereby revenues generated from the new facilities and the shared facilities out there will be reinvested back into the. will be reinvested back into the fairgrounds. Um, and it ensures that, you know, we heck will have top priority for the Red River Rodeo in July, and that the coming fair in August will have a top priority. I'd happy, I don't, GL here, if you'd like to, any additional details, I'd welcome them to make any comments. Um, it's a pretty long document, but those are really the basics. And allows for, um, investments into the fairgrounds of the Hot Funds as well, when they have sitting on quite a bit of money to be able to help to expand the fairground. Hopefully add possibly RV sites, campgrounds, and, and add additional buildings, and, and modernize a lot of the fairground area. So it, it'll set us up to be able to expand the fairground and improve it, uh, and make it great for Western Heritage Events down into the future.
Commissioners, any comments?
No, sir.
I don't have a lot, but this has been a long time ago, and that's how many years you are. So I've been, I'm just glad to see it finally happen. This will be a great, great investment for the community as a whole, so.
Well, and, and granted, you know, they are investing a lot of his own personal time into this, making it happen. And a big thanks to you for doing that, uh, getting the building down there, and some other buildings as well in the future. But, um, it's gonna look good when you're done.
Also, thanks to Matt Ford, who put a significant amount of time and dropped his document. And a lot of, a lot of times, it's what I put into it, so.
I know why the board request.
Mr. Chair.
Basically, to, to kind of put some icing on the cake, just so some of you guys don't know, basically, um, this will give us the ability to go forward spending about four million dollars on the fairgrounds, um, in private money that's donations, and it'll also put about two million dollars into a reserve account, uh, to be invested so that there's money to take care of those improvements in the future. So it's, um, for Archuleta County, it's, it's a pretty big deal, so that's basically the history of it. And all that money's coming from the estate of R D Hot, that when he passed away, he left all his assets to, uh, Western Heritage for Archuleta County.
I'd prefer nothing from the, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution two thousand and twenty two ten, approving the joint use of development agreement with the Western Heritage Event Center Incorporated and R D Hot Fund as presented. Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Item B, item B is consideration of designated board and committee appointments for two thousand and twenty two. Board of County Commissioners have appointments on various boards and committees for local and regional organizations. Um, and for everybody, um, the board may appoint either other members of the community or staff in their place. The recommended is that, uh, with name this thing, that's two thousand and twenty one, with exception of adding myself in the, uh, Commissioner Brown for the Community Development Corporation, um, adding Commissioner Mays and myself in the newly created Southwest Opioid Response District. And then, uh, change in the, uh, the next one as well, the, the CCI Series Committee, adding Isabel Vito, or I'm sorry, Vita, and Commissioner Brown as their representatives for that.
Could, uh, we go further into explanation? I don't mind reading into the public if, if it's fine with the chair.
That's fine.
Let's see, Commissioner Alvin Schaaf will be on the Airport Advisory Board.
Pardon me, Ron.
Yeah, go ahead.
Could we ask Jamie to pull that attachment? I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Come on with me, right. Sorry, Ronnie.
Final.
All right, Commissioner Alvin Schaaf will be on the Airport Advisory Board. Commissioner Schaaf will also be on the Archuleta County Housing. Ronnie Mays will be on the Archuleta Seniors Inc. Ronnie Mays on the Art Area Agency on Aging. Mary Jo Coolan and Todd Weaver is alternate on the Club Twenty. Alvin Schaaf, Colorado Workforce, Warren Brown, and Derek Woodman is alternate on the Community Development Corporation. Ronnie Mays on the Community Marijuana Offset Impact Fund. Alvin Schaaf on the Council of Governments, Warren Brown and Pam Flowers alternate. Growing Water Smart, Todd Weaver on Region Ninety Economic Development Plan. Alvin Schaaf on the San Juan Basin Health Department. Steve Parkinson on the San Juan Headwaters Forest Health Partnership. Robin Young on the San Juan Dolores, San Miguel River Basin Roundtable. And Ronnie Mays and Derek Woodman alternate on the Southwest Opioid Response District, Lori Vanoy. And Ronnie Mays alternate on the Southwest Transportation Planning Region. J R Ford on the Southwest Water Conservation Board. Ronnie Mays on the Town Tourism Committee. Warren Brown on the Strategic Private Ortiz Expenditure Advisory Board. And Joanna Elliott on the Urban Renewal Authority. And all three commissioners will be on the Tourism Resorts Economic Development, General Government Taxation and Finance, Transportation and Telecommunications, Public Lands, Agricultural Wildlife and Rural Affairs, Land Use and Natural Resources, and Health and Human Services. Is Isabel Vida with Derek Woodman, was it? No, Warren Brown, Warren Brown. And CCI Legislative Government and Underfunded Courthouse. Those are the committees and the boards that the BOCC are on and represent.
Uh, sorry, quick correction.
Chair.
Correction. I think you mentioned me on one of the water boards.
Uh, no.
And should it be Regional Audio Economic Development?
I, Club Twenty.
Club Twenty is.
As an alternate.
And then Regional Audio. You mentioned me, I think, on Royal Waters More, or Smart, it's on the water board.
Uh, no, Warren Brown. Yeah.
I mean.
Questions, comments?
No, sir.
Any, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint the commissioners or others to serve on the two thousand and twenty two boards and committees as designated and presented on the list read into the record and attached to the minutes.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C.
Item C is consideration of designation of the CCI two thousand and twenty two Spirit Committee Proxy. And in the past, the board of commissioners has designated the director, the county's partner in human services, as proxy for the CCI, CCI Health and Human Services Spirit Committee. Uh, due to the fact that we had a separation with the previous human services director, we have interim director recommendations for Isabel Vida as the interim director of human services to serve on that committee as proxy.
Questions, comments?
No, sir.
Any take a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the appointment of Isabel Vida to serve as the commissioner's proxy on the CCI Health and Human Services Spirit Committee for two thousand and twenty two as presented.
I'm sorry.
Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item D.
Item D is consideration of approval of the letter of support for appointment of Connie Cook to the Southwest Regional Emergency and Trauma Advisory Council. This letter provides the Board of County Commissioners support of appointing Connie Cook to the Southwest Recap.
Questions?
No questions, I'm just, I appreciate your willingness to do this for us, Connie.
Thank you very much.
I think you're, like I said this morning, very, very capable to do this, and appreciate you stepping up.
Thank you, I appreciate this part.
Any take a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the appointment of Connie Cook as the county representative to the Southwest Regional Emergency and Trauma Advisory Council, and to approve the letter of support for this appointment as presented.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item B.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Um, as we spoke earlier today, um.
Yeah. Did you say turn?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Tina, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, as we spoke this morning, um, we have an amended throwing alcohol testing programs, that's guidelines that were sent over to us after our audit back in October. And so they were asking for a program to, um, that they can place.
They're calling me one day.
Excuse me, I regret, questions, comments?
I agree.
No, sir, thank you.
I have none. Any take a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Archuleta County. I'll talk about this one, obviously, for the.
Second. Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item A.
Item F is consideration of designation of supervisor and human resource administrator. Currently, the county manager is direct supervisor of all of the county department heads. This agenda item designate the individual, he will be the direct supervisor to the current human resource administrator, since she is married to the county manager.
Okay. I don't know where it's headed. I'd, I'd like, I'd like to, uh, see Todd Weaver's supervisor, HR. If I'm a comment, I think that's most appropriate in our, uh, structure that we have within the county. Uh, the county attorney and the county manager are of equal, uh, status. One does not answer to or subordinate to, uh, the other. And I think that this would make a clean line of supervision that is above our approach and is not, um, questionable as it might otherwise be, and most appropriate for continuity and consistency.
I, I would agree with it. Um, the simple fact is, uh, continuity also needs to be maintained between the county attorney and the county manager as well. Um, I think there are other alternatives that we could look at. Uh, probably don't need to speak of them right now, but, uh, as I said before, um, you know, Tina is still intern, uh, as, uh, our human resources director. So that needs to be finished in bits too as well. Um, the other part is, this isn't part of Todd's contract. And, and, uh, I don't know if we need to revisit his contract. And also, it is adding more scope or more work on his back. And I know Todd, you will do the will and pleasure of the board, I do know that. And I do know that, you know how to count to two as I do too. So, but I still think it's added more work, and it will slow down some of the county attorney work that we need now too. Just wanted to clarify that.
Any comments?
Um, well, I guess in part, I've had a conversation with Mr. Weaver in advance, and asked if this is something he would be willing to take on and could take on. And he indicated to me that he could and that he would take this on. So it's not my perspective to try to overburden Mr. Weaver with any additional, uh, work. And in fact, I think that when we have issues that arise in HR, often they are legal issues that arise. So it is not as though the current relationship between the HR director and, um, the county attorney, that does not exist. It, it does exist, and it's fairly frequent that it exists. So I think with those things in mind was, was in part why I thought that this would be a, a natural fit and an available option to us.
Well, I still disagree with you.
I appreciate that, huh?
Okay, if there's anything further, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint, uh, county attorney Todd Weaver as the direct supervisor of the current human resource administrator as presented.
Second. Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May. Most impassioned with the decision. Item G. Is everybody on from the sheriff's office?
No, he would typically be there.
Right, yeah. I can, I have it, I can address it. I guess I, I still have it originally. Uh, so item G is consideration of approval of shared services agreement with the P L P O A for animal control officer from the sheriff's office. Uh, this agreement is between the Board of County Commissioners and the Archuleta County Sheriff's Office and the Rosa Lakes Property Loaners Association. But it's terms of a, or a full-time animal control officer in Archuleta County within the boundaries of P L P O A. Um, in essence, currently, the sheriff's office is authorized for one full-time animal control officer and one part-time. This agreement, uh, provides funding from P L P O A to the county, where that part-time animal control position can be a full-time position. Uh, it is not exclusive to the boundaries of the P L P O A. It is, or, I mean, the majority of the sheriff's offices' animal related calls are certainly within the P L P O A, uh, due to the population. However, um, they know that the capabilities are that this position is a kind of wide position, and certainly can, um, be outside of the P L P O A boundaries. This adds, uh, an additional forty thousand dollars to the, the budget to offset any of the costs, and would avail the, uh, second portion of the part-time and all of the associated benefits and total cost to the county as a real cost value.
Any questions, comments?
I think maybe just a question to, uh, to, to provide some clarity to the public. So, Mr. Woodman, if a, let's say a person were to get a citation for an, an offense, animal control related offense, they go to court, they pay the fine, how much of that money would be going to P L P O A?
Zero.
Okay, so this is just a county position that would be essentially the same as the existing position, except for P L P O A is choosing to partner with us so we have more availability of, um, employee to handle animal control complaints.
That's correct for sure, and, and like I said, by far and large, the majority of the dog-related complaints that are generated to the sheriff's office do come out of the P L P O A boundaries. And so it was just a partner with the, the P L P O A for, uh, to assist in offsetting some of the funding so that we can have additional manpower.
Okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate, I don't know if I initiated it, but I appreciate the sheriff's office working with P L P O A and quickly recognizing the need was there, and being on board. Anything else? Mr. Chair, any take a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the shared services agreement with the sheriff's office and P L P O A. Uh, animal control officers present.
Yes, sir. Motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item H. Definitely.
All right, um, this is the introduction, do I introduce myself first?
Yes, state your name.
Uh, I'm Ethan Pratt, um, we have best supervisor, uh, do I just, I address it?
No, that's good.
Okay. Um, this is the introduction and first reading of amended and re-stated ordinance two thousand and twenty eighteen, Archuleta County Noxious Weed Ordinance. Um, submitted for consideration as a revision to the, to an existing ordinance. The original ordinance was put into place to establish parameters for the regulation and abatement of noxious weeds. The primary purpose of the amendment is to clarify terms and conditions of abatement and to adjust the enforcement and penalty fines, um, and to include code enforcers, um, on that ordinance. Um, the main reason for switching to fines rather than forced entry is that our department is already at capacity, and a one-time treatment of weeds is not going to, uh, have any long-lasting effects. So we would have to repeatedly visit a property, um, for as many as five years before we could enter a monitoring phase, which then could take another seventeen to fifty years to think of weeds. we could enter a monitoring phase, which then could take another seventeen to fifty years to manage a weed species. So forced entry is not going to be a very effective, um, penalty where a, um, fine will actually motivate people to go and manage their property to afford that fine.
Any questions?
I just have a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, it's, what's really happening too is there's some responsible people out there that are managing their property and they're, they're getting rid of their weeds and they're killing their weeds, but their neighbor's not. So when their neighbor isn't, it inherently affects them in the long run. So all that money in time that they could invest in getting rid of these weeds or these noxious weeds, they keep coming back, but it helps when everybody works on it. I mean, I've been working on killing a lot of weeds on my place and I know you have too, um, but, uh, it's, uh, it makes it in vain when your neighbor doesn't do it.
Yeah, thank you, Ronnie.
Other?
No, I appreciate you bringing this to the forefront. I think it's comforting.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you think we need to have you read the title of the ordinance?
Title of the ordinance?
Yes.
Was that the Rarichlau County Noxious Weed Ordinance?
If you would open it up and read the section.
Okay, all right.
I could have to read the entire thing.
I know. Ordinance twenty-twenty-eighteen, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Rarichlau, State of Colorado, amended and restated ordinance twenty-twenty-eighteen of the Rarichlau County Noxious Weeds Ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
And just for the record, the entire ordinance has been submitted in writing to the Board of County Commissioners satisfying the first reading requirements and statute.
Okay. Have a brother, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve on first reading the amended and restated ordinance twenty-twenty-eighteen of the Rarichlau County Noxious Weeds Origin Ordinance and set the ordinance for second reading on March one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
That motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item I.
Item I, consideration designation of the chairman and vice chairman of the Board of County Commissioners pursuant to Colorado revised statutes thirty-dash-ten, dash-three-zero-seven. Uh, pursuant to that, that state statute, the Board of County Commissioners is required to reorganize and choose one member as the chairman. In the event the chairman's absence, the BLCC shall also choose a vice, a member as vice chairman.
And, excuse me, we had some discussions about this this morning. Cause there's nothing set in stone, but the last, uh, history, who else has all, what was I can remember?
Six, eight years, ten years.
The, excuse me, the board has always served for two-year term as opposed to vice chair. And I think, I'm willing to stay, I think the board is willing to stay on as a vice, I am. So, there are no other comments, that, take a motion.
Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the re- uh, reorganization of the board. Actually, it would be the same organization, not reorganization. So I move to approve the reorganization of the board of county commissioners by naming Alvin Schaaf as chairman of the board and myself, Warren Brown, as the vice chair.
Second.
That motion in the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Being known for the residence report of the board during the meeting of two twelve.